Yes, sir.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order of a city council. Be in March twenty-six, twenty-twenty-four, six oh-two P M. Invocation will be given by Pastor Ty Coca with Odessa Bible Church, followed by the pledge of allegiance in Texas pledged by Councilmember Swan. Is Pastor Ty Coca in? Pastor, how you doing, sir? This is your church, you come right up. Now, if you go more than three minutes, you're gonna, you're, you're, you're mandated to take up an offering, okay?
Okay, I can do that. I'm good at that.
There you go, Pastor. Bow your heads and pray with me.
Anybody wish to do so voluntarily by standing up?
Father God, we thank you so much for bringing us here tonight. God, we thank you for this community that we live in, that we call home, we thank you for this country, where we have the freedom to assemble in this manner, and the freedom to call upon your name before we do so. And God, I pray that as we come together tonight, that you would just guide this council with wisdom. I pray that before decisions are made, that we would look to you in everything we do, every decision that we make. We praise you for the work that you will do through the people representing us here tonight. I pray, God, that this is a peaceful meeting, and much is accomplished. And God, I pray that above all things, at the end of the evening, that your name is glorified and lifted up. We love you, we praise you today, we'll praise you every day. It's in Jesus' holy name we ask these things, amen.
Amen. Thank you very much.
Please join me in the pledges.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Nobody can get it wrong. Not nobody can get them wrong.
No, you can get them wrong.
Yeah, I know, I saw him up there first, whoa.
Mr. Mayor. Before we get started, need to make a public service announcement.
Okay.
Please talk close to the mic.
Okay.
We're having trouble hearing, we've already got several calls. I'll be the first one to not do it, but if everyone else could remember, please talk into the mic.
So, can everybody hear us in the back? Can anybody hear us out there in the? Everybody, let me speak into see if everybody's mic's working.
Testing.
One, two.
Testing. Can you hear me now?
All right. So, we do have some special guests here today that we wanna be able to recognize, honor. I mean, we have a small token of appreciation. It's not money, so. So, everybody remembers a little, a while back, there's a new moniker that's going around Odessa, it's called Stand Tall Odessa. So, this is something that we featured through City of Odessa. And, um, so Mike Webb believes that the City of Odessa deserves to definitely be on top. So, Mike Webb went above and beyond to put Odessa's staple sign back in place. Now, everybody remembers, you go out west, uh, Interstate twenty, right there where it does the Y. I think about a couple of years ago, is that my right? Uh, I'm not sure if somebody ran into it, it was the, um, the sign of Odessa. We had reached out to many agencies to be able to address this issue. And, um, yeah, everybody was passing it on to somebody else. But I also believe, and I think everybody here in our city believes, that Odessa should stand tall and does stand tall, and we're destined always for greatness. We should rise to the top. This is our quotes that Mike Webb said. So, Mike with Texas Concrete saw a sign west of Odessa off I twenty that was broken and laying in the dirt, and he felt this piece of art definitely deserved more. So, he went on to work and help with many other citizens. At first, he tried with a semi truck, but they, um, but, but the sign was definitely too heavy. So, he enlisted the help of Joaquin Trivicio, Triple B Crane, he used the crane and got it up in a few minutes. Joaquin then, he, uh, when he heard and he could help get the sign back up, there was no hesitation because he loves his hometown. His reputation of welcoming Odessa to our city, welcoming all the people into our city is one of the finest things people could see. Quote, "I've been a huge advocate of for Odessa to be represented well." The City of Odessa is appreciation of these citizens. That definitely go the extra mile for Odessa, for its citizens. Definitely for this, Odessa's the place to be. And so, this is something that Mike, uh, Mark Mata and I asked him to come down here and assist me on this. So, like to be able, if you're here, Joaquin Trivicio, Mike Webb, uh, companies from Triple B Crane, Texas Concrete, Barracuda Downhill, Downhole, Iron Man Truck Services, and Odessa. Uh, are you here? Anybody here? No? Okay. So, we did have some appreciation, we actually asked them to be here tonight, to be able to make this presentation, but we wanted to be able to recognize these individuals and these companies that went the extra mile. They saw an issue, and they took care of it. We also had another company, uh, and I'm trying to remember who they're, who they were at the moment that I saw them featured. I think it was the, uh, through our page also. They saw, they got tired of seeing everybody complaining about the trash, so they just went and picked it up themselves. And it's that type of initiative that we have to work together. It's like, it's like our kids, man, they just won't clean up the room, so we just gotta go in there and just get it done. It's the same way with our community. So, uh, unfortunately, they're not here, we did ask them to be here, but let's give them a round of applause and show them our appreciation. Thank you. Any say, does any comments on non-agenda items can be done so by coming out, filling out a card, coming up here and stating your full name, only your full name. I'll, uh, also remind council on non-agenda items, we cannot respond, but we can direct staff to address any and all issues that brought up by any citizen organization on non-agenda items if need be. Any member of the public may address the city council regarding any of its agenda items before or during the considerations of said item. Council, I'll ask you to review the consent agenda as presented and entertain a motion for approval, amend, or deny as presented. So, I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, second by Councilmember Mata, to accept the consent agenda as posted. All those in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. We're gonna move on to the regular agenda. Item fifteen. Considering granting authority to Steve Posick of Brockett McNeil and Posick LLC. Outside council of City of Odessa to request, no, that's it, right?
Yeah.
That's right.
For, uh, requested for authorization revisions of the easement section forty-one, block forty-one, township one, Hector County, Texas, on T USA. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, I thought we were gonna need to do this, 'cause I'm always trying to think far enough ahead that Steve and I would need to get your approval.
This is mineral values?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So, the easement ended up being, uh, fifteen foot, so not the twenty. We thought it was gonna need to be bigger. We've been back, he's been back and forth with negotiations with, with Onvendive.
Uh-huh.
And we didn't reach an agreement today, and I think we're gonna get thirty-seven thousand five hundred out of them, so we got us an extra five thousand. And, uh, so anyway, I just wanna be prepared because I thought, sure enough, we would need to go back and they were gonna throw some wrench in it, but thankfully, they did.
So, what action do we need to take?
No, no action.
No action?
No action.
Okay. We'll go ahead and move on to item sixteen. Consider accepting new amount for purchase of the old fire station number six from Town and Country, from Town and Country Drug. Mr. Jones.
Mayor, council, uh, Megan is here, Megan Prado is here, and they have offered, and I have John Harris here. They have offered two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand dollars for the old fire station number six, and that still fits within a fair market value as, because the fair market value is three-fourteen according to E-CAD. So, that's still pretty close. But it's your decision if you want to accept it or not accept the two-ninety-five.
Council, any discussion, Mr. Vasquez, is it your district? Any, uh, comment, any discussion, any questions? Nope, we're good. Okay. Anything I'd like to add? Don't oversell it. Okay. So, uh, item sixteen is consider accepting new amount, uh, for the purchase of the old fire station six. Authorized to accept the bid of two-hundred-and-ninety-five thousand for the sale. Council, do I have a motion? I have a motion by Councilmember Vasquez, do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Swan, are all those in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those opposed indicate by saying nay. Motion passed unanimously. Congratulations. Thank you. We're gonna move on to item seventeen, consider award, awarding the bid for sale for lots vacated on University Boulevard. Mr. Harris.
Good evening, council, and good evening, mayor.
Good evening.
Um, we had an offer that we have discussed once. Once with the lots for Habitat for Humanity. Uh, they've checked all their ordinances, setbacks and everything else, what they can build there, and they have offered the hundred-and-forty thousand for the seven lots.
Hundred-and-forty thousand?
Yes, sir.
That's twenty-five.
That's twenty thousand per lot, correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that is twenty thousand per lot.
Yeah, that's what we discussed, yes.
It's a great idea. Need approval. So, I have a motion, uh, for item seventeen to approve as presented by Councilmember Thompson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mata, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposing indicating by saying nay? Motion passed unanimously.
And mayor, council, since this is not a municipal building site, the resolution will suffice for y'all to start doing your conveyance, doing your closing. So, as soon as you're able to, we get the resolution done, you should be able to close. We, we won't need to do an ordinance, it's not a municipal building site.
Perfect, I'll get with you tomorrow then.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
It just, that just took a little while, right? We found something, promise you we would.
Thank you, mayor, thank you, council.
Absolutely. Thanks, John. We're gonna move on to item eighteen, public hearing. Open a public hearing to consider request by the City of Odessa establish a carport overlay zone within certain areas of the city. Zone S, S F two, single-family resident two, S F three, single-family resident three, and S F four, single-family resident four. Mr. Fisher.
All right, thank you, uh, mayor, members of council. Uh, so this item, we'd started in November. Uh, city council, y'all had tasks, uh, planning and development staff to do more research about, um, more flexible zoning standards uh, for carports, uh, in the city, uh, allowing them specifically, uh, in the, in the front yard where they have the driveways right now in some of those older homes. So, we did that research, um, we had the two town hall meetings in November. Um, then we had a, um, or excuse me, the work sessions, and we created a town hall meeting in February. Uh, we got some great input from the public, we also included an online survey, uh, as well. Uh, and they had to put their addresses in, so most of those survey respondents were, uh, were within, uh, those, those proposed, um, areas. And so, now, uh, went to Planning and Zoning Commission, and now we're here, uh, for y'all's consideration. So, I'm gonna go through, uh, for some of the people, um, a few of the changes that we had made, um, since the town hall. Uh, this is the final product tonight, and also, uh, for some that people may have not been at the previous meetings. Um, before I started, I just wanna, um, thank all of the staff, uh, with the City of Odessa, um, as well as the citizens for coming out, uh, to those meetings, uh, and just, you know, we, we all worked together on this and, and brought this forward. So, uh, in G I S permits, parks, traffic communications, and a lot of others too, just wanted those, those individuals to be, um, acknowledged. So, so why a carport overlay zone? So, we, we talked about, uh, bringing this forward. So, the current setbacks, uh, in, in primarily the zoning in, in Odessa is S F two or S F three, that's a twenty-five-foot front yard setback. So, you can't put, um, any buildings at all, not just carports, uh, in the front. The current zoning also says you can't, even if the house was further back, you can't put, um, a carport, uh, in, in front of the house. If it's attached, it can be on the side, and if it's detached, it has to be, uh, behind it. So, um, in a new subdivision where there are sixty-five, seventy-foot wide lots, this is not a problem. And the new developers usually build garages, um, you know, so they have more space. Uh, but some of the existing homes that were built, uh, prior to nineteen-seventy is where the problem was. So, with the help of Edgar Navarette, excellent, uh, work with the mapping and G I S, we were able to find those five areas. And, uh, not only did we see those were the areas built before nineteen-seventy that were zoned S F two and S F three, but these were the ones where almost all of the Z B A variance requests came in. So, for some of the public that, that, um, for them to understand that the Z B A is a, is a zoning board that, um, if the zoning says it's twenty-five feet and they wanna seek relief, they can come to that zoning board, and the zoning board can make a decision to reduce that setback. Problem is, it's two-hundred dollars, it's on a case-by-case basis. Um, if this carport overlay zone gets approved, they don't have to go to the Z B A, pay the fee, wait the thirty days. So, let's get into the standards, and I'll try to run through these, these fairly quick. Um, so, we talked about the need, so eighty-one percent of those variances were, um, seventeen of the twenty-one were in those areas in the last five years. Uh, they're the single-family home, uh, older neighborhoods. So, anything east of, uh, J B S Parkway was not, um, really relevant here. Uh, so the newer homes already, like I said, have the garages or the larger lots, um, anyway. This was the carport, um, study area, so there's the five pockets there, that one on the north, uh, is around eighty-seventh street, and then the one on the south, uh, you can see towards the bottom, and then the biggest area is in the middle where most of the housing is anyway in Odessa. So, that's just looking a little bit, um, closer at the maps. And then this is the map that, that went out in letters, so this is the final boundary. Uh, so again, not every property in the overlay zone is zoned, single-family, two, three, or four. Some of them might be commercial, um, obviously, we can't draw and cookie cutter around everything, it would be too much work. And also, if someone is zoned differently, and they're surrounded by residential, they could do a zone change, um, and build a new subdivision in one of those vacant areas, uh, you know, or if that drill site closes down or something. So, um, even the people that aren't subject to the, the current zoning that allows this, potentially, they would still have an opportunity to rezone if they met the, the requirements. So, benefits of a carport overlay, so, um, right now, all the cars and trucks are parked in the front. Soon as there's a hailstorm or rain or, or, you know, other inclement weather, um, you know, the car, there's no, um, shelter or protection. So, just for the simple part of having that is, is gonna be, um, helpful, so they have somewhere to park their, their vehicle. Um, uh, they save the, the fee, the thirty days, they don't need to go to the Z B A. Uh, it maintains the current zoning, they don't lose any zoning rights, they don't lose any private property rights. So, anything that's still allowed in S F two, single-family home, a shed in the back, they can still, with a building permit, do all that. So, they don't lose any rights, they have the opportunity, um, uh, to gain. And if they don't wanna meet the, some of the standards we'll go over in a minute, they can still go to the Z B A. So, again, they don't lose any rights there, they still have the option of, of moving it closer, um, or redesigning it if the Z B A, um, approves it. Okay, so, um, most of the responses were with, um, from the survey and from the letters were within the, um, district. So, uh, we got two-hundred-and-eighteen responses for the survey. Um, six of those also submitted the, the formal letters that they got in the mail, so to avoid duplication, we just wanted to be transparent about that, so, um, take away the, the six, and you're, you're still at, um, two-hundred-and-twelve. Um, two-hundred-and-seven were inside, uh, so almost everyone was inside. So, about ninety percent of the responses, and we, we sent it out in English and Spanish, and it was about the same. So, ninety percent of the responses were in favor of an overlay. And then when it got into the design standards, it, it, it got, um, less, you know, and, and we'll go over, um, how to mitigate some of those concerns in a few minutes. Uh, in total, when you count the letters in the surveys, two-hundred-and-fifty-eight were in favor, uh, sixty-six were against, and then five, I guess, had responded, they didn't check one of the boxes, so we just said no position on those. So, the majority of the respondents, uh, were in favor of the overlay zone. Um, at the town hall meeting, there were some questions that came up, so we're gonna go through the rest of the presentation, and, and those questions should be answered. So, these are the, these are the main standards in that ordinance that was in your packet. So, where are they allowed? So, they're in the S F two and S F three. The S F four zone is a little bit of a, it's the smallest lot for single-family, not including mobile homes in Odessa. Um, that zoning district came in in twenty-nineteen, so there's not a lot of lots that are built to the S F four, but it does allow that if a developer wanted to come in on smaller lots, they would be able to apply for that, um, as well. Uh, and again, it's, it's not touching any of the properties east of, of J B S Parkway. Uh, anything that's zoned for apartments, zoned for townhouses are not gonna get this, um, exception. So, it's only for the single-family, um, districts. Um, some of the other things, uh, they can't be on an arterial or collector road. Again, you can still go to the Z B A and seek relief, but we were worried about kids and, and traffic and safety. So, on the higher-order roads where there's a lot more, um, higher traffic volume and higher speeds, that would be a no. But since most of the properties are on local roads, they would still be able to apply. Also, on corner lots, it's very dangerous when you're turning a corner. Um, our sign ordinance covers this, but our zoning ordinance, uh, wasn't specific. So, um, we've added a section called, uh, some places call it a site triangle, other places a vision clearance triangle. So, we'll, we'll call it a site visibility triangle, but the twenty by twenty feet on the corner, and that's within the property. So, with, if the right-of-way is another ten feet, it's really thirty by thirty, so they're gonna have lots of room. They can't put it right there if, if, again, a car's turning the corner. Uh, okay, setback screening and height, so we said, um, right now it's twenty-five feet or twenty feet in the front, so we would allow them to go to five feet. Um, just to clarify, that's only to the front property line. There's another, um, usually at least five feet of public right-of-way to the street curb. So, the ordinance is written that way, if some of those older lots might be bumped up to the street, then they would need ten feet. So, it's not really five feet, it's really ten feet back from the, from the actual street curb. Not in the site triangle, and then on the side, um, three feet. Building department's very helpful, the building inspection, so as long as they keep that open, and so we're not, uh, we recommend there's no screening or walls on this just for a number of reasons, you don't wanna have a carport closer to the street. And again, someone runs across the street, it's just safer not to have any walls or screening, and that would meet building and fire code. So, they could go to three on the side. Why did we do that? Some of the houses are pretty tight, uh, along the sides, and so just giving them an extra two feet kinda, uh, gives that a little bit of extra, extra relief. Some cities go down to two feet, we didn't wanna go any closer than three. Uh, parking and size, so, um, what was the best really for, for everybody if this was to be approved? If y'all approved this? Um, we thought that the, the safest to get people where they wanna go, but still protect and, and keep most of the front yard open was to allow up to two-car carport. So, five hundred square feet roughly gives you a ten by twenty car space and another ten by twenty. Uh, if they wanted to do this picture and have it on the side and have one in front of the other, that's fine too. But in the front yard, um, they're only allowed to have one. If they're on a corner, they have to pick, they can either put one on the one street, or they can have it on the other. Um, and that's, that's the, that's the deal. So, the rest of them, they have four or five cars or a boat or other things, they're gonna have to find other space. But this, this helps most of the residents, we believe, in these areas, so at least they have somewhere to, to park their, at least two vehicles. And then the minimum of parking in Odessa is two, so this just makes sense. Um, has to be on concrete or asphalt. Again, that's the same thing now, the driveways are concrete or asphalt, so they basically can just put the carport over the driveway. Okay, so this is what a lot of people wanted to know and ask at the town hall and at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. So, um, we're gonna focus the most on these three slides, and then we're, we're pretty much almost finished and open to public comment. So, the color, the material, and the slope are the three things that, um, we wanted to pay very careful attention to, given that it's in the front of the house and it's closer to the street when people are driving by. So, um, we're open to the reduced setback, but obviously, it has to look good, and people were raised, raised some concerns about that. So, color, um, in all cases, the color should match. If the house is, has a red roof, the carport should have a red roof. If the house, um, if it's, whether it's flat or pitched, it, it should be consistent. And again, if somebody wants to keep it twenty-five feet back or in the backyard, then they still have the right to paint it however they want, but in order, in exchange for the benefit of having it in the front, we think that the color, um, should match. Uh, carport material, uh, so when we first took this to, uh, P and Z and to town hall, um, we looked at other cities that had overlay zones or that just allowed them by right, like San Angelo, um, Amarillo, and Abilene. Um, and they are usually pretty strict, Abilene, I think, is, is a little more lenient. So, we had to find a middle ground, because a lot of people, it's maybe more expensive for them to put asphalt shingled roof, and then also have an asphalt shingled, um, carport. So, in those cases, um, if they wanna do a completely flat roof, and they wanna put a four-inch fascia so that, paint the trim, one of the colors, um, on the home, and then paint the roof, um, staff is, is, is willing to, uh, recommend that, uh, based on other cities and other photographs that we took in Odessa, we think that that would be appropriate. The columns can only be vertical, uh, and they have to add that trim, so that's gonna stop the, the cheapest version, the, the, I don't wanna say tacky, but the, the least aesthetically pleasing types of carports would not be allowed. If someone just got one for, you know, and, and the ones with the skis on the bottom. So, they have to have, um, columns, the columns are only for support, can't have any decorative things or anything else on it. So, the second, the middle picture would be allowed now, and that's what we're recommending today. Ideally, we would all like the one probably to the left, that would be the ideal, the ideal world. Um, but in some cases, um, if people do wanna paint it, uh, you know, and use a metal roof, and it's not shingles, but at least it's flat, you can't see it, um, we're okay with that. Uh, we've seen, actually seen some pretty good, um, designs, and again, in the, um, in those areas, so. Uh, and then finally, with slope, um, again, same thing with the, with the flat, uh, carport. The slope doesn't have to be the same, um, if the house is flat, then we want the carport to be flat, 'cause we wouldn't want the, the, the smaller structure to be appear like a monstrosity compared to the home. So, so again, those three pictures pretty much say it all, if the house is pi, is, um, pitched, the carport can be pitched. If the house is pitched, the carport can be flat, but if the house is, is flat, then the carport has to be flat. The carport can't be taller than, than the house. So, we think that's a reasonable, um, compromise for, for the residents here, based on what they had told us. So, these are a couple examples of, uh, we looked at those five overlays, so these are actual pictures from Odessa in those zones. I didn't put addresses or anything, good or bad, just 'cause again, we're not, we're not here to single anybody out, um, but we did wanna show, um, some of the ones that were already being done. Uh, so the, the one on the left is, is a very good example, um, probably could've been a little bit, um, longer, but there's the same roof pitch, the same material, and the same color. So, that's kinda what we're really going for, um, and then the same with the next one, if the house is a metal roof, then the carport can be a metal roof. Uh, these are the ones that are flat, so you can see, they don't have the skis on the bottom, they don't have the, the, the tacky siding on it. They've just got posts only, and they paint it the same. So, we would want the roof to paint the same as well, because sometimes if there's a slope at the street, you might be able to see a little bit of that roof. So, again, if the house roof is brown, then even if on a flat roof, they still need to paint the top of the roof brown as well in case, um, it kind of encroaches over a little bit. Again, two more good examples, um, so these are the ones that we don't want. Um, and I'm hoping this will change if, if this ordinance does pass today. Um, the tent flo, floppy structures like, um, tents and things like that, I mean, they're gonna blow away with the wind. Um, I understand, this is a good example of someone that probably would've come in for a permit, but didn't have an opportunity because of the setback, and so they did the best they could by putting up the tent. Um, also, that screening wall on the second one is, is not what we want for two reasons. Um, that car backs out, um, they can't see, and a kid runs across the street, it's very dangerous. So, again, we wanna keep it open, but also, it's a fire hazard if it's on the side yard. So, we wanna make sure that there's nothing underneath, no junk, no debris, no screening walls, just the roof. And, and they can, they can bring it down a little bit as long as they keep seven feet clear, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so approval process, um, same as now with one, one addition. So, this is the same process now for any residential permit. You submit your permit to building inspections on the first floor. Um, once we get, now that we're online with, um, M G O, uh, they can, they can do it through, um, M G O electronically, so that'll be the lo, the long-term for, for a lot of hopefully different processes. Um, it goes to all the departments, including planning and permits. So, permits is gonna look at your, um, your building code, they're gonna make sure, sure that it's, um, it's structurally safe. Planning is gonna look at the aesthetics. So, when it's in a front yard like that, it's gonna get flagged, and then we're gonna look at, um, the architecture. Once the permit is issued, um, building inspector will go out, check the setbacks, and check the, um, uh, the building structure, and then planning or permits, uh, we can decide that, we will go out and just make sure that it matches what was shown. So, they need to give us a color rendering now, um, or at least, you know, something that, that labels the colors, and then, of course, the site plan, which is already, um, required. So, there's really not much different than what they're already doing, they just need to- And then of course, the site plan, which is already, um, required, so there's really not much different than what they're already doing, they just need to show the colors. And the materials in addition to just the, you know, in case they did a normal blueprint, so we think that's, again, that's reasonable. Um, there, we did set up in a, in the ordinance, if they, if the planning manager says no, we don't think it really matches. Again, they can still appeal to the ZBA, pay the fee, go to the zoning board, uh, and, and seek relief that way. And I think there may be cases where that just, that just happens, and, and again, we understand it's not a one size fits all, but. Um, if you all decide this is something you do wanna consider and you do wanna approve, um, we've done a lot of research, I think this is probably the, the most. Comprehensive that we can and putting everything in there for you. Um, okay, one more, uh, slide, so there were some concerns raised at planning and zoning commission, and we didn't wanna overlook that. So we want you to have all the information, and we want all the public here to know what's, would be transparent, what's going on, so. Um, property values were, were raised, I'm not gonna get into the weeds on this, because I'm a urban planner, I'm not a tax expert, I'm not a legal expert, but. Uh, from some of the calls we made, um, to the appraisal district, most of the time, the property value will go up. Um, the better the carport, the nicer material, the more it's gonna go up, and that's just 'cause there's more, there's more space. Sure, if it was enclosed and it was a garage or it was part of a home, it's gonna go up more, but again, normally they wouldn't be allowed anything in the front, so this is just allowing them to do that. Um, the taxes are more complicated, um, all I'm gonna say on that is it, it typically will probably raise tax a little bit. Um, but, uh, it's usually insignificant, and, uh, I'm gonna, like I said, I'm gonna stay clear of that, but my understanding is, um. You multiply the tax rate by, you know, roughly whatever the cost is, they do some kind of formula, and so. Again, on a five hundred square foot carport, it should not be, you know, millions of dollars, but would it go up? Um, I would say probably it would go up a little bit, and that's just being upfront, um, legal issues. Um, we, we, we've called around different places, um, generally there shouldn't be any, any legal concerns, um, on this. Uh, and then the fire hazards, um, the six foot separation between the structures is significant, so. I just wanna point that out, if somebody had a, a, a structure. On the adjacent property that was built fifty years ago and it was right on the lot line, they wouldn't be able to get the three foot exception, they would need six feet because of. Um, of the building code, so as long as the neighbors, um, meeting their constraints as well, so. As long as they don't put walls on it and they keep six feet from any other structure, they would, they would comply, so. Again, we feel this is, this is probably the, uh, decent compromise. And, oh, I guess that's back again, so that concludes the presentation, um, if you all have any questions for me or for other staff. And then I guess you guys wanna open up to the public?
Counsel, you have any questions? Can I go ahead and open it to the public?
I have one. Jeff, you mentioned earlier that sixty-six responses, uh, were not in favor of a carport overlay. Uh, what was the most common concern from those sixty-six that did not agree with it?
Sure, um, yeah, I said, I think most of the people were concerned about property taxes and property values. Um, on the aesthetic side of things, um, most of the concerns were about the setback in the front. And in fairness, I don't think, again, the notice letters that go out are pretty accurate, but it's hard to cover everything, all the details in there, so. I think people were concerned it was actually gonna be five feet from the street pavement, and that's not true, so it's actua- I think that. Now they, I think people understand it's actually ten feet from the street curb, it's five feet from the property line, but the property line. Does not go all the way to the street, so there's that little buffer that the city owns that they can't touch, so. Um, we think with the ten foot setback, with other cities that have done this, that's usually reasonable, but that, that's where it's coming from, yeah, and then the taxes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Hey Jeff, tell me, tell me why P and Z didn't approve it, 'cause I understand they turned it down.
Yeah, so the concerns raised by the, sure, no problem, um, so the taxes and the property values were raised, um. They also raised some, some concerns about, um, title, um, not every title company agrees on this, so we wanna be, um. Honest about that, um, some of the research we did, but, uh, most of the title companies I've talked to, including in. Um, San Angelo where they have a carport overlay, um, usually don't have an issue, uh, I don't wanna get in the weeds, but I, my understanding of that process. Uh, to the best of my knowledge is, uh, they look at setbacks, they look at encroachments, um, if it gets into aesthetics, 'cause we have. Overlays all over the state, uh, as well as historic overlays, and so. The next step would just be calling the city and the city would provide them with a copy of the, uh, permit or the design approval. And then that would, that would clarify that, but, um, we don't believe there would be any issues, I did call. Um, some other cities as well, um, including the, uh, building official and code officer, uh, in San Angelo and Abilene and. Um, they didn't have any, uh, they said they didn't, haven't received any complaints or anything about that particular issue or other issues in the last. Year, um, most cities are averaging about, being honest, an average maybe about two or three complaints a month for carports. Um, which is probably lower than a lot of other types of structure types, so they do get them, um. And it's usually just because they didn't build it with the permit, so we hope that if this does pass. It's gonna encourage more people to follow the rules and come in with, and, and get the right, um, permits.
Oh, the sixty-six that responded against the ordinance, were they like located in the central location or, or? Or were they just sporadic and throughout the whole overlay zone?
Right, so, yeah, most of them were in, so of the let- so start with the letters, these are the official public record letters. Um, the, the people that, the thirty-six that were against, twenty-nine were in the overlay zone, so most of them were. And then of the, uh, survey, the one that we did online, not the letters, um. Uh, I believe we had. Oh, I, I need to get the four, I had it actually on another, um, slide, so my bad, but it was, it was about ninety percent were in on both.
Well, I guess what I was asking was like, of the ones that were against it and that were in the over- overlay zone, were they like in, in a certain part of town? Or were they just spread out?
It was spread out, yeah. In fact, I'd say it's about even, like, if, based on the acreages of those five areas, it was about even, so, pretty dispersed.
Mr. Fisher, I was, in, in majority from the surveys that came back, uh, by majority it passed from that aspect. But I'd just like to thank you for taking the time and your time in developing this and pushing this to council, because we. And the fact is, we do have Odessa citizens that have homes without garages. And the cost of cars today, there's a, a lot of people out there that wanna protect their cars, and thank you.
You're welcome.
So Jeff, I just understood, one thing I wanna back up to is, so the overlay zone, especially the one in the middle, the big one. You're saying those homes were built, uh, before nineteen seventy or after?
Before nineteen seventy.
Before seventy?
The, the ones that, yes, the ones that were zoned, um, in those zoning districts in those areas, that's correct.
Can you go back to that screen?
Yeah, that's.
Can you go back to that screen that shows the, um?
Overlay.
Zones?
Yeah. Is that, yeah, it's the big one I'm talking about, in the middle. There you go. So, the, the east boundary on that is, the east boundary there is Bo- John Ben Shepard Parkway, right?
That's correct.
And then the next street up is one ninety-one, goes down one ninety-one, then back to the north. And so, I'm trying to see what the cross street is here coming down.
Going north or south, I think that's Grand.
North and south, that's Grandview?
Yeah.
Okay, those were built before seventy, yeah.
Fifty-six.
The four seventy, okay.
Just so y'all know, it, um, Mr. Navarette with GIS, um, was very thorough, and so when you input that information. In there, um, he does, he does it very well, but he was able to extrapolate that, so it is, it is accurate down to the decimal point.
Yeah.
I'll take the word for it, I was five years old.
Well, I, I wasn't, I wasn't, and Grandview is the last street out there, okay? Yeah, and Town and Country Shopping Center was, was brand new, so, uh, I know where I lived was, is in that district right there, and I know that house was built. Before seventy, so I know that much, so, everything east of Grandview, I, I didn't think it would go to Parkway, but. Uh, I was thinking.
You know, that line, north, south line would be, would be Grandview, is my only concern. Okay.
One of the criteria is, it, correct me if I'm wrong, how you wind up looking at the areas from the previous. Uh, I guess, residents that were going to, to, uh, uh, Board of Adjustments. So is, is that kinda what we, we kinda use as a model to try to find an overlay district?
So, that was one, that was a significant part of it, the second was, was the mapping, and then the third was, was taking the time and, and driving out to those areas.
Three-point phase that you use to try to come up with the best overlay map as possible.
That's right, what was actually interesting is, is, um, I, I'm, yeah, I, we started with, with the map first. And then when we extrapolated it and found all the variances, those, all those dots just popped up within, seventeen out of twenty-one popped up within that area. So that was able to strengthen our, our research.
The spirit of what, what, what you're trying to do here is try to streamline the process for our residents. To be able to address a carport that many had come and expressed, and, and we heard that overall theme at the town hall. They're putting a lot of money into their vehicles, and right now, it's been a difficult process to get to the, uh, carport. Because of the, uh, of the ordinances that we have in place, I mean, that's, that's the old thing I heard that night. It we, it was a good turnout, now, it doesn't mean that they're speaking for everybody, but it was a good measuring stick. And so, a- and, and I was saying earlier, I think everybody here. When they see those thunderstorms, hear those warnings, if you don't have a garage, or you only have one garage, you have multiple cars. It's true, I know I already have my neighborhood mapped out where I'm driving and getting under the carport, whether it's at a bank, I'm not gonna tell you where I, that's. But ha- most times I get there, if you don't get there within certain minutes, it gets full, then you gotta go to your second and third plant, and. Usually when you're trying to go to a second and third plant, get caught in the, so, sometimes it's a false warning, but you know what, it's okay, I'd rather. I'd rather lose that time than have a vehicle totaled out, and I think everyone kinda expressed that, you know, uh, those. I, I only heard a handful of people that, you know, that kinda agree with me in that, that they do go through the same thing. And they just wanted a simplified version, we didn't know what that was at that time, that's why we asked the staff, can you look into, and Jeff has done. Uh, pretty extensive work to try to find the most fairest thing, uh, you know, but. We, there's no way we're gonna get a hundred percent agreement on this, and, and, and nev- it, it never, it never comes, but.
So it's, uh, among the other, sorry man, is the, is the, is the twenty foot long enough to cover these? I won't call what I always call them, big trucks?
Uh, long wheelbase?
Yeah, I know, I, I know what you're.
Because the one you showed had half a truck sticking outside, which is the whole purpose.
Yeah, so that one was.
That's a concern.
I, I was trying to find one that, that, that met the materials and the color, and that one was so good, but it was a shorter carport. And it was further back, so that's, you're right about that, that wouldn't have been, I don't think that was twenty feet long, so, the reason we picked that, that number is. In the, in most of the zones, uh, the twenty-five foot front setback, we can't, we don't wanna go. Um, longer than twenty feet, because then you get too close to the street, um, so we, we think that's, should, you know, I'm. I don't own a, a truck or an F one fifty, but we assume that should be enough sufficient space for most trucks and, and, and cars.
Kathy, we have no other questions or comments, I'll go ahead and open up, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the public wishing to comment on item eighteen has presented, can do so by coming forward. Stay, uh, signing your name and stating your name for the record, only your full name for the record. Can do, uh, open the open, uh, public hearing now, it can come forward. Just state your, uh, full name for the record, and that's it, sir.
My name is Paul Miller, I own Miller Properties, I own eighty properties in this overlay zone, okay? And the map they sent out, you couldn't tell, they, they all were addressed to my office, not. With the address of the house on it.
Okay.
Okay, you need to send out another, uh, mail out with each address on it, so somebody can. Object to it, I object eighty times right now, okay?
Okay.
I didn't interfere with you. Uh, I had a house, uh, that had a carport, it was within the ten feet or whatever, caught fire. And it melted the siding on the house next door, as far as fire goes. Gary Simm sat up here the last time and questioned it, and the people that were in the real, the real estate end of it. Voted it down, and they suggested, eh, well, they suggested to overthrow it, uh, I think Permian Real, uh.
Basic insurance.
Uh, said it would affect the title insurance, according to Gary, okay?
Ta- uh, uh, answer the question, um, affected how?
As far as getting title insurance, 'cause you're gonna be, the, the property is gonna be three feet closer. To the next door neighbor.
Okay.
Okay?
So.
And I've, uh, I mean, I've been in the building business here all my life, I quit in, in ninety-six. Because we bought enough homes, we had to take care of our own stuff, it's always been twenty or twenty-five feet, and the reason is. Backing out and seeing kids running down the street, you need to have that much room, not a building sitting in the way. You know, I mean, uh, the maps that they sent out, like I say. You saw it up there, is this, but I've got eighty peop- pe- pieces of mail. That went to my office with no addresses on them, so I didn't get a fair chance to vote against that, 'cause I didn't know the addresses. And I've got property all over town, and, uh, I mean, uh. Also, the cheapest way to get square footage in your house is closing a garage.
I'm sorry, say that.
The cheapest way to get square footage in your house is closing your garage, so a lot of these people close their garage in, and now. They want a special permit to get a carport, okay? Or they bought a house with a garage closed in, they want a special privilege to get a carport. I mean, you know, uh. Like, and I'll guarantee you this, human nature is gonna be, that those cheap metal carports that you see. They will pop up everywhere, and it'll look like a ghetto in these areas, 'cause people will not go get the, they will not go get permits. I guarantee you they won't, they'll just put them in, and they'll have a carport.
You don't think they're doing that now?
Well, they are, but, but, there again, when you say they can do it, basically put it five feet or ten feet from the. Uh, property line or t- street, okay, if that's okay for me, I'll just go do it my way, and that's human nature. I mean, it is human nature, okay, and it's, you know, um. The, I have less problem with them building it, if they build it to match the roof line of the house. With the same material versus a flat carport, flat carports just, you know, they're not, if you had a flat car, have a flat roof, fine. But it should match the structure of the house and the material of the house, okay? Uh, uh. And another thing, um. You can't have a fence around your front yard over three foot tall, because of not, it blocks the view of. People backing in and out of their carports, and that's a, that's a city ordinance, okay? Um, I mean, uh, and I think there needs to be another mail out, where I get an address for each property. Not mil- to Hazel Maldon, Paul Miller, with a map like that.
Let me ask a question, how, you have eighty properties?
I've got a hundred.
I apologize, a hundred, um, they were all sent to your office, so, are, are these are, hold on, let me finish. These are all rentals, I mean, how they wind up going, they're all rentals?
Rent.
Okay, so they went to a ma- your management, uh?
Yes, they went to my office, but with no address on each letter.
You own all hundred?
Own all hundred of them.
Okay, so you want your renters to be able to have an opportunity to?
I'm not worried about them having cars under carports. If they want a carport, put it in the backyard like the rest of us had to do.
Are these rental, rental properties?
Yes, these are rental properties.
You want the, the notification to go to all?
No, I want them to come to my office with the address on them.
Went to your properties?
Yes.
Okay.
I want them to come to my office with the address of the property on it, so I have a chance to say no.
Well, you are saying no, and we're hearing you, we haven't made a decision yet.
But, I mean.
We're, we're, we're having a conversation.
You know, he was here, and I voiced my opinion, the last time I said, here's eighty noes. You know, he was here and I voiced my opinion. The last time I said, here's eighty no's. Did you hear him talk about eighty no's? No, you didn't.
Okay.
But anyway, that's my concern and uh, like I say, uh, five foot or ten feet's not enough to watch a kid run out in the street when you've got cars. And I think another thing that ought to be changed, you shouldn't be able to put a camper in your driveway, because that blocks the view of people.
I don't think anybody here agree, disagrees with you, but, but, but it, but it.
My concerns and uh, like I say, I know people wanna protect their cars. I built a house with a double car garage, and it still has a double car garage. You know, I could've got another four hundred square feet, closing it in, but I didn't. I chose to protect my cars. I didn't buy it with it closed in and then want special consideration.
So just to be clear, um, you're against the?
I'm against it.
I understand, I hear that.
And I think it will affect Gary and uh, uh, the people that were up here with the real estate, said it would affect the value of your properties.
Okay.
That's where, that's the rest of the story that he didn't tell you.
Okay. Tried to ask some questions, but, thank you, absolutely.
So it's, it's my understanding though that the uh, one of the stipulations to these carports is that they can't have the sides uh, blocked, right? They're, that they gotta be open. So that's not gonna be impeding with the uh, line of sight, correct?
I'm gonna say, human nature is, they are going to stack boxes and trash under their carport. They will.
Well, with human nature though, if it's illegal or legal, they're gonna do it regardless. So, if they're gonna do it, they're gonna do it while it's illegal, while it's not allowed. So, I mean, it's.
So, Jeff, uh, we're prohibiting any side panels.
That's correct.
I mean, there was a discussion whether it's partial, halfway, or things of that nature at the town hall meeting. But this presentation eliminates, there'll be no side, because of line of sight.
Yes, correct.
It's based because of bow, because uh, coming in and out of the driveway, you come closer, you know, you're, you're, you're ten foot buffer from, from the sidewalk, just because of that, you know, making sure you're not backing up. You're able to have a cleaner sight of pedestrians, if they happen to be walking behind you.
Right, so the, the way we wrote it now, because one of the, one of the residents asked this in the town hall and they said, well, can I, on the side, can I bring it down a little bit, um, as long as it's seven feet clear? And at that time, we'd said that, that might be okay. So that's something you all can, if you are comfortable with that. Now, if it's, again, if it's um, three feet from the side, then they can't have any things, they, they can't have anything coming down even a little bit of the roof on the side because of the fire issue. But if they were five feet back from the side and then the other property was five feet back, they could taper the roof down a little bit, as long as they had seven feet clear. And that's usually like for signs and other structures as well, or when you're on that site triangle thing, to give enough visibility. But if you all wanna say absolutely not just seven feet clear, but everything has to be clear under the roof, whatever size it is, we could put that into the ordinance too.
Now, the standard in this, in these houses at that, that time that were built pre-nineteen seventy, the setbacks, side to side, are ten feet tall, five on each side of the property.
That's, that's correct. So one neighbor would be five feet and then on the other side, he'd have, or she'd have to five feet.
What's the standard for the new housing that we're seeing, uh, housing on one hundred street and stuff? What, what are we seeing there?
So it's still the same, if it's, it's straight zoning, like SF-two, SF-three, it's still twenty-five feet back?
Setback from the front?
From the front.
I'm talking side to side.
Right, and then on the side, it's, it's um, five feet.
Okay, so.
SF-two is six, and then SF-three and SF-four is five.
Like for council discuss, the uh, what was brought up, and I guess, was that brought up in planning and zoning about the three foot?
Uh, it, it was, and, and the concern was about, again, fire spreading, but again, as long as they only have a roof and they don't come down the sides, then my understanding from speaking with building inspections is that, that, that is acceptable. It's just the, it's the wall that's not allowed under the building code, which could catch fire. But if it's just the, a roof on the top, then that would be exempt.
That's a, that's a good point, because um, I mean, it says here that staff answered that at the meeting, three foot side setback with no screening walls would comply with the building code for permits and inspections. And we just adopted the new uh, codes, the twenty nineteen code, I believe, um, which were more stringent than the ones that we had previous to that.
And, and we'll have to be addressing the codes again here pretty soon. Um, there was also concern brought up about not being able to use it as a storage facility, to put in boxes, junk to that nature. Uh, it's something that, from the city standpoint, we would enforce from them, uh, how would we do that? Do we do it through building, do we do it through code enforcement, how would we address that issue?
So it'd be the same, no, that's a good question. Uh, it would be the same process as now. Somebody would have to make a, a formal complaint, uh, and then it would be on a, a case-by-case basis, no different than now. At least, the best we could do as staff would be, and we have, is put that in the ordinance, say no junk or, or trash or anything underneath other than the cars. And you've still got a garage or you should hopefully have some, your, your space in, in the back. But, and that's, that's the issue, it's, it's, even if we don't allow this, it's the same issue. Somebody is gonna do something, so.
Yeah.
Uh, but yes, that's right.
Now, initially, the, the staff, your staff, your office, you, you proposed for the materials to be aesthetically matching to the home with the, with, with the pitch.
That's correct.
That's the position you took, and that's what you, so in the town hall meeting, there was discussion about allowing the flat. And that's a concern about bringing in the skids, that we wind up seeing that they're already pre-manufactured and bought. Our fear is that the winds would catch it, just like we had a couple of nights ago, and it wind up just like a trampoline in somebo- in, in power lines or somebody's yard. So, you know, the discussion is right in here, is with the three options that we saw, the flat, whether it be modified, built up, or metal, there was, uh, it's a consensus, you know? It's something that the staff brought back from the discussions at the town hall. Uh, but initially, if you go back, they were basically saying, just go with option one, but people were concerned about the cost. Third one is, we keep hearing appraisal rates and property, property values going up. So, you know, for the pointed discussion, as everybody listens into and people are tapping into video, how would the property taxes be affected if your neighbor right now, without this overlay, is doing something like that? It affects definitely the square footage of the owner. But, what does it do to its neighbors, both left, right, east, west, north and south and?
So we, we uh, we had a phone, uh, call with, with somebody that um, indicated that they were uh, familiar with that process in, in real estate. And I believe that that person is here uh, tonight, if, if that question had been coming up.
It'd be great, just for clarification for everyone here and everybody listening and, if they wouldn't mind.
Yeah, I'm not sure if, if um, is Aaron here at all?
Yep.
Okay, great.
Thank you for, for doing that.
My name is Erin Heard. I'm a local realtor. I also, um, worked um, in the wholesale of real estate for about fifteen years, so love to help answer any questions you may have.
So I guess the question is here is that, you know, I think, uh, I guess the understanding that people be able to grasp, if a homeowner decides to add a garage and close a carport, make it a garage or adding square footage, obviously, if they were to, you would come in here and improve their house and put it in, whether in the backside or the front side, something like this. Aesthetically, that it matches their home, things of that nature, their property values are gonna go up.
Yes, you gotta think, anytime that you're adding any sort of value to a property, um, it's gonna, it's gonna add your.
But the homeowner knows that's what's gonna happen. The thing is, the question is here, is that I think what people are understanding is the person to the north and south, or east or west of them, that they're gonna be affected.
So when, um, when we sell a property, there's always going to be an appraisal, and you have to take into consideration on the appraisal report, that there's gonna be, you know, adding, adding and subtracting for carports or any diff- different additions.
But that just happened, I mean, and there's nothing to stop that, even now, as other, of homeowners continue to increase their square footage if they choose to. That home sells, there's a new appraisal, there's an added value, it affects everybody within what radius?
Well, they're gonna use comps and so they'll adjust the comps. So if one has a carport and one does not, they'll take that into consideration on the value.
But it's happening already.
Yeah.
It's not like.
Oh, co- correct, yeah, for sure.
It exists now.
It, it exists now.
Overlay wouldn't create that, it already exists today.
Yeah, yeah, we already see, we've got carports out here, it's already taken into consideration on appraisal reports.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wanted to be able to clarify that, because I think there's a misunderstanding that this is creating an anomaly that doesn't exist, but it exists.
It exists, yeah, it's here.
Does anybody have any questions?
Any other questions?
I appreciate you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, sir.
I paid two hundred thousand dollars of property tax this year, so how much is gonna make mine go up?
How much is it gonna go up anyway?
Well, sure they are, but.
I understand, sir. I, I, I get it, you know, um, and, and, and we're trying to find a, a, a medium here. And uh, and, and, and that's why I was, I was trying to ask some questions, but you, you're upset, and I understand it, but I was just trying to ask some questions. The questions I was asking as an lady was what I was trying to ask. And, and I understand and I apologize, but we did, we weren't aware of that just till now. And, and, and so, I guess the question is, how do, how, how do we, how do we figure, do you want us to send out?
If you send out a, we send out a mail out with all the addresses to my office, then I can vote against it.
Eight, uh, how many times? You wanna wait, how many, how many, how many times you wanna vote against it, a hundred?
I've got eighty that's in this overlay.
So you wanna, you want eighty votes to vote against it, okay. Noted. We, we, eight, let's, let's just attach eighty objections to the eighty addresses. We don't need to go ahead and go formal and send out, so Mr. Miller owns eighty properties and he wants to reflect eighty objections, to reflect the eighty homes that are within the overlay. You got that, you got that in the minutes?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Miller, um, in these zones, how many of those eighty properties exist within those zones? All of them?
He has a hundred, eighty of them.
Eighty?
A hundred, yeah.
Eighty of them are in those zones.
Okay, gotcha.
The overlay homes that I bought were the good ones, that like said, these are earned, I do repairs for all the real estate companies. And I was raising rent property, I would go in, I would look at them, I'd take my dad, and we'd make the cash offering ninety-nine out of a hundred times mortgage companies sold them to us, because they didn't want to fix them. And if we, I'll be honest with you, I mean, I've got a house right now that I've got listed in the trial, and I gave eighty-nine hundred dollars for it in nineteen ninety-five. It's on the market for a hundred and sixty-nine, I'm selling all my big stuff, because it costs so much, to fix it now with the inflation.
Thank you.
One, one question I got, uh, for Mr. Miller, if you're the property owner, you're the owner of these houses in the, in this overlay zone, and these are rental houses, couldn't you not put that in the rental agreement that they can't build a carport?
They're not gonna build a carport, number one.
Well, so, how's that gonna raise your property taxes then?
I'm saying, I'm saying that people are getting special considerations, that they're probably gonna make my taxes go up or hurt the value of the property. And I mean, it's always been, all my life, I'm seventy-one years old, this with a twenty-five foot setback. My dad was built here in the fifties, the forties, and I've been, I, I, I contracted repairs through uh, ninety-six. And, because I got so many properties of my own, I had to quit my health. Now, I can't do the work, and I'm having to hire people to do it. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's, you're giving people special consideration, because they close their garage in for square footage, or they bought a house for the square footage, the garage closed in, that's what you do. They do when they bought the house, and then when they close the garage in, if they want to have covered parking. I don't bother, don't bother me, they put it in the backyard, that's fine. You know, but they shouldn't be able to put it in the front of the house. I mean, because, I like to say, kid runs out chasing the ball, and you're backing out of a carport that's ten feet from the street, are you gonna see him? Maybe not, probably not, because it's, they just dart out, you know? I'm, I'm not, my, my, my tenants are not gonna spend, you know, five thousand dollars to put a decent carport out in front of the house.
Right.
You know, if you build it to match existing structures, I have no problem with it. Because you won't have a bunch of people going in there and welding up a bunch of uh, seed channels, putting metal on it, and having flat carports sticking out in front of everybody's property. Think about it. You want one next to you on each side of you? No. And one up here, person up here that wants that in their neighborhood next to their house, I guarantee. Y'all all live in a probably nicer areas, other side Grandview, okay? I live on Kauai now, and I'm moving back over on the west side by property, the house that me and my dad built in nineteen seventy-seven. My wife's passed away, I'm going home. I didn't rent it, I didn't sell it, and that's where I'm moving back, I don't want a carport on the other side of my house. It's valued at close to three hundred thousand now. You're not putting, necessarily putting, I mean, you know, a hundred thousand dollar neighborhood, it could affect the deed, because my house was built, you know? I mean, it's hard.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Does anyone have any more questions?
I, I was gonna ask, does any, any, council, any other di- discussion?
I do, I do have one.
Yes, sir.
Jeff, if you took the additional eighty to what we had earlier, where I was saying earlier, that we had, at least we had a majority on that, so I was pleased. Do we have a majority on it?
So, so two things, and, and, and again, I, I just wanna clarify in the record, the reason why probably, um, it was sent to the, his, his company and not to the individual, is that's the state law.
He's the owner of the property.
Yeah, and so the state law requires that we have to send it to whoever the property owner of record is, whether it's an LLC or the individual's name, and not to the, the renters. That's just the way that, the state laws, most states are.
The law states, okay.
That's what he wanted, and he said that.
I'm talking about, they can send it to the, to my address, my office, if they can put the address on the inside of that.
Okay. Well, we've noted your objection eighty times for each property within that. No, 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 you're good. I just wanted to make sure that, you know, uh, there, there's no need to go back and redo that. You know, we hear it loud and clear, and we, I wanna make sure that we enter it into that record, that you object eighty times for ea- that we reflect eighty. No, 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 you're fine. Eighty, eighty of your properties within the uh, the uh, the uh, overlay. That way, that way we don't have to get all that process back in and do that again. And you don't have to come back over here and we just push this down the, down the road. Um, council, is there anything that you wanna address, that Mr. Miller addressed, or any of the members of the council addressed? And the, on the, the ten-foot setback from uh, you know, you reduce it to three? If, if, this is not mandatory, doesn't mean that it comes across the street that everybody would do that, it's just an option. Uh, but they would be with no uh, sidewalls, um, anything else as far as the ten-foot setback, which would be a min- um, a maximum. And, and then the, the.
Mr. Fisher, can you go back to that one slide before that one? Yes. So, that, this is a good example right here, um, that's a twenty-foot, uh, because I looked at the length of the uh, the F-two-fifty there, it's twenty-two feet. So it's probably about an eighteen-foot carport, because there's, um, but backing out of that, even taking the carport off of that picture, the only line of sight that's gonna be blocked is gonna be from those four, it looks like those posts, uh, that, that pipe coming up from there. I mean, it's, it's, I'm just saying, it's not really a big uh, block of uh, line of sight right there for, when you're backing up. It's, and, and that's the main reason that we're not gonna allow the walls and the sides to be uh, to be covered.
That's right. If someone had a large truck like that, it's still gonna block the view. The only thing you're gonna see now, hopefully, is just two vertical posts, in addition to the truck, when you're looking at that angle. And then, of course, the roof, that's why we, for two reasons, a seven-foot clearance is, is code compliant, but also that seven-feet clearance is, is when you're, you know, when you're in a car and you're about three feet off the ground, then you, that's the distance that you would see.
Right, and then, and also just for clarification, I live in District One, because we have to live in our district, so we don't all live east of Grandview. But um, and the neighbor to the uh, north of me does have a carport, and it's done, I mean, it's, it's fine, it's good, I have no problems with it.
The neighborhood I live in is uh, east of Grand, uh, is west of Grandview, and my whole neighborhood has uh, garages. But.
The neighborhood I live in is, uh, east of Grand, uh, is west of Grandview, and my whole neighborhood has, uh, garages, but p- today's pickups don't fit in. If you do, if they do fit, you're not getting out of the vehicle. And so, um, and, and, and there's different situations why I want people, uh, wanna do it. I'm not gonna disagree that people have probably enclosed them, have bought houses with enclosed ones, but then they, there's homes that don't have any. I, I think we've heard pretty much about every reason why people want, uh, are for and against. I don't, uh, and so, um, so, with that being said, I'll continue to ask the council, any other further discussion or instructions on what's presented today? We're ha- we're in the discussion, if there's anything that you want to see modified or anything like that, we can do that, now, let, let, uh-
I have, I, excuse me, mayor.
Yeah, uh, and so, uh, having said that, do we have any other questions, and then we'll, we'll get, we'll let you in the second.
Yep, I just, I was just sitting here thinking, I, I did talk to, to my representative on the Planning and Zoning Board, Gary Sims, and he and Mike Withrow both feel like that not only will title insurance be affected, but, uh, and John's here, John can probably answer the question too, uh, it'll also affect the survey for, I mean, any resale, you'll have to do another, another survey, or before you can get title insurance, play up to another survey, am I right, John? That's what, see, that's another cost that's gonna go into that that people don't realize, because the title insurance has survey attached to it, if I'm not mistaken. I've bought a few houses.
Correct, it does, but if it was a pre-existing survey with no changes, we can assign that from one to the other with a T-thirty-one, that can be done.
Okay.
But if something's added, a carport, addition to the house, swimming pool, anything like that, you have to get a new survey.
Regardless.
Yes, sir.
Regardless. It's, it, it's not creating an anomaly, it doesn't exist today.
No, but it's, but the carport's gonna require a new survey.
If they choose to build it.
Yeah, right, right.
There's no mandatory that, because we're doing, well, we, this happened, this came out of the town hall. People in town hall, there was a few individuals that thought we were mandating them build a carport. No, no, seriously, and we're like, and I, and I think the sta- and it got hostile, so it was like, the sta- the staff said, no, nobody's forcing to do it. Staff was just looking at it from the standpoint of making it a little bit easier. If you fit within these confines, it makes the permitting process smoother and easier. Uh, it's become like, uh, like it, it, it's, it's like a mandate that this is being done, no one mandating for the people to build anything. And so-
As a Realtor, I was a little worried about the carports, you know, what are we gonna have, we're gonna have a bunch of temporary metal ones, I didn't like it.
Yeah.
But, with us making it match the house, making it look nice, I'm truly okay with it. And yes, it's gonna cause your taxes to go up, if you add on to your house, your taxes do go up, it should not affect your neighbor.
Yeah, yeah, uh, that, that's another one, I mean, I added a mandate.
But the individual's gonna realize that when they go to apply for the permit. They're gonna know going into it that this is what the cost is going to be.
We, we don't know that, yes.
The appraisal districts is gonna charge you.
So, so once again, I'm gonna ask this question, is there anything in this presentation that the council objects to? That you want to readdress, do you want to modify? Because one more, one more question, and anybody else has questions? Yeah, one more question, then I'm gonna close the, uh-
He had, he had a question over here.
He was asked if Midland had this type deal, and he said no, so Midland does not allow.
Yeah, Midland doesn't also, doesn't get, give their homeowners a home state either, and I don't see them adopting it over there. Yes, sir, yes, sir, I get it.
I will say though, that Midland is in the process of adopting something like this, I was actually one that was working on it over there, on that side. So they did start the study board.
Okay, anybody else wanting, wishing to comment on, uh, item eighteen that's presented?
This gentleman right here.
Which one? Come on. Just state your name for the record, only your full name.
My name is Alfredo Caldera.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, I'm one of the persons, I'm, apologize for my, my, my accent. Well, I'm one of the persons that I request for, to make my, my carport bigger, because obviously, a ten-by-five is not enough to cover one car, not, not in these times. The weather, the sun, the, everything is, is not enough. So, uh, I request to make it a little bit bigger, to put two cars into a, a little bit taller, ten-foot taller, to make the wind blow. And, I know it's gonna be, uh, more expensive, it's gonna be, my taxes is gonna be up. That is obviously, whatever you put on the house, is the house is gonna be more, uh, 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 higher on the price. So we know, everybody knows that, so, but if something is gonna be worth it to me, and I know it's gonna protect my cars, it's gonna protect my family, so it's something that is gonna cost me, so which I'm willing to pay. Why? Because it's for my own, uh, safety also, and also, my property is gonna look better. So everybody wants to make the house, make it look better. Even the price is gonna go up, I'm agreeing, people that doesn't wanna pay taxes, doesn't wanna pay more, whatever, but in my case, I mean, I'm willing to do that, and I'm, I'm, I'm here to, to bragging, to let me do that for my own, uh, uh, house, because, I mean, I'm not, I'm not bothering nobody to make a, a, a carport like that. It's not close, so for safety, because we used to, uh, have the carport like that for safety, for, uh, fire, whatever, it's supposed to be five foot, but it has, it's an open, so everybody can go for emergency, can go past whatever, and, and it's wide enough for when you open the door, won't hit the other car, you know? So, and if you have an emergency with one car, you will be able to get out of the other one. So is, is that why I request to make it a little bit bigger? So, uh, it's the only thing, I mean, I'm, I agree with the, the person that is, that is doing very good, uh, is doing very good job, uh, present, uh, presenting this, uh, and, and I will, um, ask to, uh, allow people like me to do something like that, well, I think it won't bother. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak on this item? If not, I will close the open hearing on item eighteen. Counsel, I will entertain a motion to accept, to deny, or to amend.
A move that we accept is, uh, the carport overlay presentation?
With, as, as it's presented?
With, yes.
Okay. Counsel, any discussion? If not, is there a second?
A second.
So I have a motion and a second, all in favor indicating by saying aye?
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying aye? Uh, it passes six to one. We're gonna move on to item, yes, sir. We're gonna move on to item nineteen, considering many in Article one-eight, one-dash-eighteen, Annexation, City of Odessa Code of Ordinances, First Approval, Mr. Jones.
Mayor, counsel, uh, very quickly, this is our Annexation Ordinance one eighteen-one, and all we're gonna do is, uh, basically add some language that, uh, we could enter into an agreement, a written tax sharing agreement with the city, the county, we could do that, rather than them necessarily excluding us, excluding the property from the county assistance district. It just gives us a broader way of going about with that MOU, covers the MOU, that's all it does.
Okay, and we're still doing it on a case by case?
We're still doing the case by case, but what I wanted to do was just go back and add, you know, to cover the MOU.
Okay.
Then this is what this language does.
This is favorable, uh, uh, language to the county?
Well, it's favorable to the city and the county. Favorable to both of us.
Any discussion? If not, entertain a motion to accept item nineteen, it's presented by, uh, City Attorney Jones.
So they-
I have a motion by Councilmember Thompson, second.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposing indicating by saying, same side, motion passing the announcement. We're gonna move on to item twenty, consider donating real property where the Odessa College Downtown Park has been built to Odessa College pursuant to Local Government Code, Section two-seven-two point zero-zero-one, Mr. Beckman.
Hopefully, this is the last time we gotta talk about this, we're at the end of the long road that we're at today. We have Mr. Ken Zartner here, representing the college tonight, and what this is, is just passing, asking to pass the ordinance to transfer this land, and, uh, it's got the reverter clause, it's, uh, to be used for public or municipal use, and if we have any questions for the college, I'm sure Ms. Zartner, yeah, Zartner can answer.
And mayor, this is the second reading?
This is.
And we have the conveyance deed over here, that you can execute, and, uh-
Do you have it with you?
We do have it, uh, Ms. Aguilar has it.
Counsel, any discussion on this?
No.
If not, entertain a mo- any questions for, uh, do we see records, does anybody see?
Yeah.
Oh, there you go, any questions for, uh, Ken? Don't you wanna ask him how the basketball team's doing? Well, you guys are going for a national tap, you're, you're on the hunt. That's the boys' steak guy right there. He's the one that wanted to make the, uh, the carpet at the blue, and I said, and I want it on the record, when the pigeons start hitting the ground, it's all on you. If there's no discussion, I will entertain a motion to adopt item twenty, presented, I have a motion by Councilmember Cornell.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed indicating by saying aye, motion passing the announcement. Okay, let me, uh, let me, let me do resolution, I'm gonna do that right before we go into, we'll, we'll do it right before we end.
Yeah.
Okay, we're on, uh, resolutions, item twenty-one, considering, uh, removing the participation by the City of Odessa in Downtown Odessa Inc., reverting back to the bylaws immediately, proceeding the fifth bylaw amendment, Mr. Beckman.
Okay, again, this is what we covered, uh, two weeks ago, but this is a resolution that will basically roll Downtown Odessa Inc. as five-on-one C-three back to their preceding bylaw, which was, uh, one immediately preceding the fifth bylaw, fifth bylaws, one that basically brought it into the city, and this is a resolution just ending this process.
Counsel, any discussion? Any guidance? If not, I entertain a motion to accept item, uh, twenty-one as presented.
I'm sorry, mayor, one quick question, John, you know, the funds that they've already received just stays with them, that's correct? Just wanna make sure I'm clear on that, okay, that's what I thought. Sorry, no.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Greg and I'll have to stay.
Stay.
Okay.
Until we get in, they can vote if we have something else comes up.
Okay. Correct.
It's still on the board right now.
Correct. This is the second reading, counsel, if there is no discussion, I entertain a motion to accept item one as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? There is five in favor, none opposed, and two abstentions. Okay. So we're gonna go, I'm gonna ask a motion to suspend the rules, and I need a second.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilmember Mata, second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Haney, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed at the same side? Rules are suspended, we're gonna turn around and go back to the previous, and we have someone who showed up, you know who it is?
You're going to the proclamations, mayor?
Yes, yes, then go back to proclamations. So we wanna recognize, we talked about it earlier, we wanna recognize, what of Texas concrete? There we go. If you don't mind, we're gonna embarrass you a little bit. And, we just wanted to be able, we already did this, so now we can do what you're here to do. And we have the, uh, the Odessa sign that was knocked down, and you're with Texas concrete?
Yes, sir.
You wanted to say your name?
Michael Webster.
Michael, well, there's a man.
Right.
Nice to meet you. We want to be able for you to share what you saw, what motivated you to do what you did, because we wanna be, we wanna be able to honor you and thank you for what you did. Okay, if you want to address the, the crowd that's still here, so.
My name's Michael Webster, uh, born and raised in Odessa, Texas, and, uh, I kinda, it just kinda happened quick, but one day I just passed it, I noticed knocking down, and, uh-
How many times did you pass it?
Seven times. Well, I've, I've been passing it all my life, but I just kinda really noticed it, like, I know it just caught my eye, like, just laying down, and, uh, it gets kinda deep for me, but I used to, I really didn't have a good past, I used to kinda be homeless and stuff, and then, uh, I saved my money, built my business off from Odessa, so kinda just represents me, I was down on the floor, and then raised myself back up, so. That's pretty much all I could say.
Something that symbolizes, uh, stand tall Odessa, which, you know, that's something that's already taken off, and that's attributed to you. So with Texas concrete, the City of Odessa wants to give you the certificate of appreciation to Texas concrete to going above and beyond and erecting the Odessa sign there in West Odessa, up I-twenty, March twenty-six, twenty twenty-four. We want to thank you with all the bottom of our heart for what you've done, congratulations, you have great service.
And now this is the one thousand and sixty-sixth time, I'm spending a short guy.
I don't think I'd embarrass him either, mayor.
All right, the people tell me, I say, if you look tall on TV, I say, I'm trying.
Might get shorter.
The camera angle?
Go back to miscellaneous, City Secretary, uh, Norm Aguilar.
For the, uh, Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, Lisa Frost is willing to serve again? For the Housing Authority of Odessa, appoint Vienna Ariano, which is a mayor's appointment.
What was his first name again?
Dan.
We have a vacancy, we had one of, uh, our appointee pass away.
I have a question for Norma.
Yes, sir.
Uh, from what I understand, for the animal shelter, it was, um, Henry Light and Susan Clark and Lisa Frost all said that they were interested to serve again. Yes.
Doctor, Doctor Ly?
Yes. Yeah.
That's it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, uh, for Animal Shelter Advisory Committee, I need a nomination for Lisa Frost and Doctor Ly?
So moved.
And what else?
Susan Clark.
And Susan Clark, so Susan Clark, Lisa Frost, and Doctor Ly, we have a motion by Councilmember Cornell.
I'll second it.
Second by Councilmember Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against indicating by saying aye, motion passing the announcement. For Housing Authority of Odessa, uh, for a vacant position, nominate Vienna Ariano, I'll make that motion. Second, second by Councilmember Swann, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed indicating the same side, motion passing the announcement, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, seeing that there is no more business before the city council, I entertain a motion to adjourn by Councilmember
So moved.
Swann, second by Councilmember
Second.
Vasquez, all in favor indicating by saying aye.
Aye.